If you'll notice, we don't have a finance officer with us tonight. The weather's affected the roads. So I'll be doing double duty tonight. So be patient with me. So the first thing we need to do is call a roll. Burrus?
Present.
Huddleston?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Lukens?
Here.
Brant?
Here.
Romi?
Present.
Verbel?
Here.
All right, and we're working on getting some agendas. Did Carl say he could do copies for us?
Yeah, we're working on it.
Okay.
Here, go ahead and take this one, Jeff. And just. I can look over Bill's shoulder. Or actually Bob's, I guess.
You need eight of them.
It's not.
Plus the audience.
That's the audience.
Oh, that's the audience.
All right, while Carl's doing that, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, if you have a conflict of interest on any item, please let the council know before you vote. Need a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, if I could remind council tonight to speak extra loudly into the microphone because Mystic will be doing these by video for the minutes.
Need a motion to approve the minutes from the February 6th council meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 6th council meeting? Second.
So I had Craig make the motion, Larry second.
Yes.
Discussion? Motion to approve the bills in between?
Do you want to vote on the minutes?
On the minutes? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. There were a couple of people that followed you and Carl. Got them? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody in the audience, audience on the agenda?
Thank you.
A motion to approve the bills in between?
Make a motion to approve the bills in between?
Second. Sorry, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the current claims?
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $81,942.99.
Second.
Dave?
Hi.
Discussion?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Communications from the public, is there anyone that'd like to address the council? All right, we'll move on. Council updates, Dustin Kleinzahser from McCallie Vision Fund Committee. Dustin asked to be bumped back to the next council meeting, so he won't be with us tonight. Onto personnel, I'm going to get a motion to approve personnel actions A and B.
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through B.
Second.
We've got Larry making the motion, Dave seconding it.
Yes.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Onto new business, item A. Possible motion discussion to approve and authorize Police Chief Norton.
I make a motion to approve and authorize Police Chief Ross Norton to sign the Axon Master Services and Purchasing Agreement for the purchase of eight T7 basic taser bundle at a total cost of $21,944 to be financed over five years with annual payments of $4,388.80 beginning June of '23 and ending June of '27.
Second.
Okay, I thought it was eight or seven.
Discussion?
Is my understanding we're trading in our old tasers to get this price?
Yes, Chief Norton is here with us tonight, so if you'd like to give the council a brief rundown? But yes, Craig, that's correct.
So, yeah, they'll credit us for every taser we have in our fleet, whether they're in operating order or not. They give us a flat rate. Granted, it's not a bunch, but it's not something we can just get rid of or surplus or anything. So the fact that they'll buy them back, give us a credit, this is the price that we got. It's total outfit, everything we need, and it's operational June 1st.
Okay. And these are, our old ones don't have a warranty anymore, and they're not insured, and, you know, yeah.
Correct.
So it's a whole new warranty.
New technology, they're way more advanced, and like she said, there's warranty, warranties on all units, and they're backed by their Axon Master insurance.
Are these more powerful than our old tasers?
I mean, there's just advancements in the technology as far as the, they're more user-friendly, there's less risk for accidental discharge and things of that nature. So, yeah, I mean, they are more powerful, 100%.
So does that mean you all have to be re?
We'll have to, so like, I'm a taser instructor for our department, so I can recertify our entire department, the use of these. The classes are weapon-specific, so we had X2, so everybody's certified in X2, so I'll have to certify everybody in X7. So if you're asking if we got to taze everybody, that's up to the judgment of the chief, I guess.
Doesn't that also?
That would they know. Councilman Romeo has volunteered to assist.
Excellent.
All in favor?
Doesn't the deal also include a large number of cartridges?
Yep. 64 cartridges is what it'll.
Is that each year or just upfront?
That's upfront.
Just upfront?
64 cartridges.
Hopefully, we don't need to use even a fraction of that.
Yeah, I mean, they're 40 bucks a piece. So, I mean, they're not cheap, but 64 should last us a.
You'll have to use at least eight, huh?
Yeah, maybe. And then that's holsters, that's everything. I mean, that makes them fully operational. We don't have to buy holsters or chargers or batteries, because they, it comes with a charging dock, they're rechargeable, so.
Not to cut you off, I apologize. I was just, I didn't see earlier when I was going through this, how long is the warranty on that?
I don't have an answer to that off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay, because I see an estimate end date, but that's 2028. I just wasn't sure if that was actually it for the warranty, or is that the program that we're signing for?
Well, I mean, we're paid in full in 2027, so I would say that when we get these tasers, they have a five-year warranty on them, is what I would read.
Okay, so that would be 28 and it, the numbers match up there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Hey, I had a question, this may sound crazy, but they're coming out the technology now where it's in a glove. Have you heard about that?
Yes, yes, but not enough to be able to speak on it, I guess.
Okay, I just was wondering, maybe. All right, thanks, Ross.
Yeah, you bet.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ross. Don't go too far, you may have more questions.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business, item B. Possible motion discussion to authorize Police Chief Norton to purchase a Leeds Online Power Plus subscription.
I make a motion to authorize, go ahead.
I make a motion to discuss to authorize Police Chief Norton to purchase a Leeds Online Power Plus subscription for the police department. The 2023 subscription fee is $2,091 and will be funded by a future contingency transfer.
Discussion?
When will this, if we vote this in, when will it be available to you?
I think it's tomorrow.
Oh, really?
Could you come up with a microphone, please?
I think it's just, I can pay for it tomorrow when we have access to it.
Okay, right away then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And how long has this been in discussion with your department?
What's that?
How long has this been in discussion with your department?
As far as trying to get Leeds online? I mean, since I came here, it's been something that I've wanted us to get. I had it at previous agencies I worked for, and it's an incredible asset to have for law enforcement.
Ken? No, you go ahead and finish.
No, I was just going to say, you know, I didn't make the budget for this year, obviously. If, you know, moving forward, it's definitely something that I would make strides to make sure it's included in our budget, because it is phenomenal to have access to. It solves, I've personally solved several cases with it in my law enforcement career. We have, I don't know if you guys have that attachment up there in your packet, but I've got a couple of open investigations currently that, I mean, the day I get it, I'm going to start putting in data to see if I can, you know, if any of this information's available and we can solve some things right away.
Can you give us a quick scenario of how this helped you?
Absolutely. I'll just, I have one of my old case reports here. I worked up as a deputy in Custer County, and I took a report from the quarry out on 711 Road that they came out and there was a welder missing. So and so, it really helps if they have an idea of the people who have been around. You know, typically, we, you take a call and they have a suspect in mind, you know. Well, this guy was here, you know, you go interview him, and he says, "It wasn't me, I don't tell you." You know, you can take that information, punch it into this database, which is exactly what I did in this scenario. They had a suspect who they fired the day before, interviewed him, he denied any wrongdoing, got access to this program, put his name into the database, and auto-populates, boom, right there, this guy pawned this missing welder that morning. You know, and there's photographs of it, there's serial numbers. With the program, with the software, you can immediately contact the business that pawned the item, place a hold on it so that they don't sell it to somebody else, and you got to track it down. They'll place a hold on it, tag it, hold it there, you go up, recover it, place it into evidence, and, you know, do your prosecution and everything with that. So, I mean, there's certain instances, and the database opened, it's back to 2015. So, I mean, anything, new, old, somebody realizes they're missing a gun that was in their basement for five years, and they just went to go get it, and it's not there, you know. A gun's a bad example, because those get put into NCIC, so if they get sold, it alerts, but a stereo, you know, or a tool with a serial number, I mean, anything that's identifiable, serial number-wise, description-wise, engravings, there's photographs included. If Bob pawns it, Bob has to produce his ID, you know, so it shows the identification of the person who pawned it, and they verify all that stuff. So not only is the item right in front of you, so is the driver's license of the person who pawned it, you know, so.
So basically, you're getting full disclosure on the trade for, per se, for goods, for cash?
100%.
And you have them on video, pretty much, or stills?
Yeah, I mean, I've got a whole case report here where, I mean, we did that. We went, pulled the surveillance, watched the guy get out of his car, grabbed the welder, bring it inside, set it on the counter, you know, take the cash, put it in his wallet, go out the door, you know.
Can't get more blatant in there.
Yeah, I mean.
Very good.
So, it's, I'm really excited about the opportunity to get this.
Now, would most pawn shops and anything like that all be part of this program? Is that something they need, have to do, or is it something?
So like, our local, in-town ones, I've never seen on there, but your big ones, your First National Ponds, all the places in Rapid City, all those larger-scale pawn shops, every one of them is included in this.
Okay.
And it's a regional deal, so we can get it to Minnesota, North Dakota.
Good, good.
Montana, Wyoming, Nebraska, so, I mean, if they pawn it within a 500-mile area here, we're going to be able to find it.
Good, good.
Yeah.
It sounds like a very good tool for.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? So to what the chief was just talking about, you know, in your packet, he put together a list of seven active investigations that he feels, you know, this particular service would help with. Going back to the last council meeting, there was certainly a conversation about stolen items and the request to counsel to purchase something like this to help with those situations. So the timing of Chief Norton putting this together, I think, is good, and it is a step that the council can take to help citizens and help the police department recover stolen items. I appreciate you putting it together, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think anything that's going to make the police department's job a little easier with their investigations is a big asset.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item C. Possible motion discussion to renew and approve the motion to approve a $200 bonus for Evans Plunge.
Make a motion to renew and approve the motion to approve a $200 bonus for Evans Plunge Mineral Springs lifeguards, front desk, and custodial staff for the 2023 calendar year. In order to qualify for, in order to qualify, an employee must work a total of 300 hours in the dedicated position as scheduled over the 10-week peak season between May 1 and August 31.
Second.
Is that you, Deborah?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion?
How many times are we going to vote on this?
I want to point out, in the motion itself, it's to renew, because the city of Hot Springs follows Robert's rules, to the point that Craig is making. The intent is to just not continue voting on something until the desired outcome is But you can renew a motion that had been voted on in a prior session. And the reason that I put it back on the agenda is always asked by a council member if it would be possible to put it back on the agenda. They had said that the night that they voted against it, that they were comfortable in their vote that particular night, based on the conversation the council had. But a day or two later, it popped in their head that this particular bonus was discussed during the budget sessions. And the council kicked it around. It was pointed out that the money for these bonuses would be in the Evans Plunge budget, so that they would be able to absorb it. And the individual said that they felt like, because they voted for the overall budget for 2023, they didn't think it was right to micromanage those expenditures that were talked about and council was aware of during the budget sessions. I had the same recollection. I reached out to another council member who had the same recollection, that it was discussed, and the budget for 2023 was unanimously voted on. So that's the reason that I went ahead and put it back on the agenda, is always asked by a council member to do that, if it would be possible to do it, and other council members remembered having the same discussion that individual did. To answer your direct question, if it's a no this time, then I don't see any reason to bring it back up.
Well, I don't remember being on there, because I wouldn't have went along with it, because I don't think that we should favor, be favoritism to one department when we have that many part-time employees that show up for work and do their job and don't expect a bonus. I had employees call me about this, and I just don't, you know, they got a big raise, part-time employees, 80-some cents an hour. That's going to be more than $200 a year with their raise, so I just don't think it's fair to the other employees. I won't vote yes for it.
Our plunge manager seems to believe and has the experience that this has worked in the past to help retain staff during the summer months, and so I would like not to micromanage and allow her to have the tool to keep a good staff going, so we don't end up closing it like we have in the past.
I would like to point out that it is an enterprise, and they were at a very profitable year, and are not requesting money from the city this year. So it's just, it's an important incentive to allow the manager to manage her people.
It's not micromanaging when you're taking care of the taxpayers' money.
You know how I feel about this in my own way, is yes, I agree with what the mayor was saying, I went back, I thought about all this, I looked at it, but the more I thought about it, the more I probably overthought it. I don't think it's fair. Why are we giving one group of people monies when another group of people that works for the city, another group, and another group, and another group? It's not, to me, it's not fair.
Because we can't keep staff.
One second. Thank you. I understand all that, okay? But we have problems keeping other people in other departments. This is, this is going to create dissension in the ranks, that's all it is. So I'm just going to have to go along with Craig.
Well, I agree with Larry that all, straight across the board, we have a hard time keeping staff in other departments as well, and getting enough people, seasonal people, to do the jobs that need to be done, not just at the plunge or the golf course. You've got the streets and parks and.
Cemetery.
That are suffering too.
As an employer, I don't, I don't give bonuses to keep people. I give bonuses for good performance and give bonuses for achievements, but to give a bonus just for you to come to work, I don't see no reason to be doing that. And that's just my personal opinion. But I don't see it as being a way of fixing the problem.
Well, we're having deja vu again here, same discussion in the past. It seems like the reports we've got is the bonuses have helped to keep the people in the shoulder season, and that's what we're trying to do. Whether it's fair or not, the fair thing, or the important thing, is we're keeping our facility open as best we can, and that's our intent, and that's why we initiated this thing, that's why we're trying to keep it going. So that's why I will support it, is, you're right, we do not have a performance-based wage system. This is stick around for 300 hours from May 1 to August 31. So instead of bailing on us when school starts, stick around so we can keep the plunge open and make some money, and for that, we'll give you 200 bucks out of the existing revenue stream, so I'm done.
And the manager said it worked.
It didn't work as last year did.
I call for a vote.
This is disappointing. I purposely didn't indicate who had asked me to put this back on the agenda. Larry has now said that he's the one to do it. It's back on here because my understanding of the conversation was Larry felt it was appropriate for him to vote yes, which would have changed the vote. So now we're right back to the original vote we had that would not have been necessary had it not been indicated to me that it was wanted back on the agenda because they wanted to vote differently. So that's disappointing, council. I apologize for putting you in this position. Had I known the conversation was going to go the way that it did, I would not have done that. So with that, recognizing Craig asked for a call of the votes, we're going to do a roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Craig?
No.
Dave?
No.
JR?
Yes.
Linda?
No.
Larry?
No.
The vote does not pass. The motion does not pass. All right. Onto new business, item D. Possible motion discussion to approve and publish twice.
I make a motion to approve and publish twice a notice to bidders for the lease of one city-owned package off-sale liquor license. Sealed bids will be opened publicly and read aloud at the 3/6/23, March 6/23, regular council meeting at 7:15 PM.
Discussion?
Do we know when we're, after this evening, when it'll come up for publish, publication?
In the paper?
Yeah, would that be the next paper coming up, or?
Yes, it's going to need to be published twice before the March 6 council, or the public hearing on it. So I'm confident Finance has been in touch with the paper, and they will get the necessary notifications published. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New business, item E. A possible motion to approve a travel training request.
I make a motion to approve a travel training request from Police Department Administration Charlotte Shively to attend Sex Offender Registry Conference April 27 and 28, 2023 in Deadwood, South Dakota.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item F. Possible motion to approve a travel training request from Police Officer Justin Richardson.
I make a motion to approve travel training request for Police Officer Justin Richardson to attend crime scene training for rural agencies at LET in Pierce, South Dakota, March 13 through the 16.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. All right. On to our committee reports, administrative and finance. JR?
The next administrative finance meeting will be 1:00 p.m., March 6th, at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Airport advisory, Bill?
Next airport advisory meeting is Thursday, March 2nd, 8:30 a.m. at the airport.
Thank you. Custer, Fall River Regional Waste Management, Craig?
There was no meeting. The next one's March 9th at the Mueller Center. I forgot what time, I think, seven, seven, seven.
And that's your birthday, correct?
That's my birthday.
All right.
So I don't know. You guys might not have a report next time.
Thank you. Historic preservation, Deborah?
Next historic preservation is March 1st at 5:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
I'm going to ruin your streak. We had a meeting on February 9th at the Evans Plunge. Attending were myself, Chris Hansen, Okoya Zimiga, Tom Nas, Allison Ruderbush, Mara Smith, Barry McNair. Absent was Dennis Fisher. Meeting was called to order at 12:02 p.m. Discussed new committee member recommendations. Two names were submitted and will be forwarded to Mayor Bob for approval of one. Since the January meeting, we have had one incident in the pool that was resolved by an alert lifeguard. We're looking at holding lifeguard training during the month of March. We will be closed March 6th through 19th for our annual deep cleaning and repair projects. Swim team updates include a meet in Newcastle, February 10th and 11th, future swim meet in Pierre with 10 students qualifying. Looking into having an end-of-the-year party date to be determined. Allison suggested perhaps the plunge could host a three-week swim camp this summer. Formal swim lessons are on hold pending hire of a new recreation director. There is a new billboard sign up on Highway 18 West. We are working with Bridger Steel about the front facade of the building. The next meeting will be April 13th, 2023, noon at the Evans Plunge due to the closure in March.
Any questions for Linda?
What's the discussion about the front facade?
It's peeling, so they're having a discussion with Bridger Steel about replacing the front facade.
Replacing or painting?
I don't think they were going to.
It needs replaced. It's very, it's been around a long time.
I think the idea was to go in and replace all that metal since another thing too is because of the angle of it, the water and the snow just comes straight down on top of the tourists. People go in there.
There's no protection over that front door.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry. Is there anything they're considering at this point?
I think they're still in discussions with what it was, is going to be replaced with, and they haven't divulged that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Larry?
Next meeting will be Wednesday, March 1st, 2:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center. Everyone's invited.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Deborah?
There was no meeting this month. The next one is March 15th at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Next public safety is Thursday, March 2nd, 2:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
Thank you. Public Works, Dave, Craig?
February 14th, we had a meeting here at 1:00 p.m. New business would be crosswalks on Main Street and University Avenue. Discussed kind of where we're going with this. And as everyone knows, we're still all a work in progress. We did have an add-on to new business, and that would be number two. And that is a open request, and I think we should request, that the county consider having their own burn pile. Means we are, have, for the most part, no way of stopping anybody coming in from the county, out of city boundaries, and dumping. And it is open for the most part, pretty much 24/7. So we would have to have somebody there to police as they come in, which we do not have. And it would be kind of ridiculous to do so. But I do not understand why we have a county dump, but we don't have a county burn pile for those residents that are outside city limits.
Well, you can take brush to the county dump. You can take brush over to Edmond.
But it's becoming a problem for us.
I know.
And they're not open on the weekends.
And the biggest part, as Deb just said, they are not open on a Saturday and a Sunday. And let's be realistic, most people work Monday through Friday. There is a few probably have days during the week that are off. But it is becoming a burden for the city of Hot Springs to be collecting this. And a second point would be, you're having work done out in the county and also here in town, where contractors are doing the work and they are charging them for the work and disposal of what would be their scrap. And it's ending up in our burn pile. Now, that's, to me, is double dipping. That's another issue that is also becoming a real problem. But I would say is, I would request from the council everybody's feelings on that. But I don't know that the county would do anything, but I think there should be some kind of a request or at least some kind of letter sent to them stating that we need some help with this. It is becoming a little, a little much. Okay? Now, street maintenance, we have replaced sewer at Baltimore Avenue. We're gathering information on that to see. Now, all of these maintenance things that we go through here, the public needs to understand that we are shorthanded, we are behind, and projects that are going on with the highway project, we are helping with, with city employees. This puts a strain on what we can get done in a timely manner. So a lot of the times you're going to hear me say, we're gathering info, getting more information, or when weather is becoming not an issue, whenever Mother Nature decides that to happen, that's why you'll get a short answer, but it is the truth. So we have alleys using Ace Hardware as a example. We did some work there for the drainage to get away from the building and not saturate the alleyways. So we are, we did a little bit of work, and that is, as time goes by, we'll get more of that done in other places in the city. But as a place to start and kind of play with, that's what we've done there, and it has been helping property owners from Yes Way and from Ace Hardware. And some of the folks that live in that area are seeing a little bit of a difference. And as time goes by, we'll improve on that as we can. As we just discussed, the burn pile on new business, burn pile, everybody that is impacted by their health and so forth at facilities here in town, we have contacted and let them know for the next 30 days, we are looking for a good day to do the burn. The burn, and I shouldn't use day, but in all actuality, it'll be early, early morning, 3:00 in the mornings when we start the fires, if we have the perfect conditions. Mother Nature sometimes has not worked well with us in the past, but for the most part, in the last five years that I know of, we have not had any problems. But those contacts have been made. At this point, it's just a matter of coming down to the right, the right time and the right conditions. Trimming of trees in the alleyways, this is work in progress, like I said earlier, when we have the manpower and the time. Valley View Drive improvement, schedule, cost, materials, we are working on those things as we speak. Albany and Boardwalk Hill, again, same condition. We were waiting for a bid by a local contractor, but we have not been, we have not been contacted back. Moving along, utilities, we discussed earlier about the MRF. We have the lid, the new lid and digester, and the tank has been washed out and is in excellent shape for its age. No improvements were needed there. The lid is, well, without Casey being, Tracy being here, I do believe the lid is completely done. Is that not correct, Jeff? Would you be able to answer that?
Not. I'm sorry. I apologize. That's, Dave, I can't hear very well.
That's okay. I was just wondering if the lid on the digester?
I'm sorry. It has been done. It's completed as of yesterday.
Okay.
And everything is still taken care of with that.
Okay. So we are in good shape there. Hydrant pressures, we have a bid opening in March, and we will let you know as it comes along where we're at on that. Code enforcement, our code enforcement officer was busy that day and could not make the meeting, so we do not have an update as of right now for that. I'm sure he has it, but I have not made contact with him at this point in time. Old business, hail damage on roof repairs and stuff, we're looking at some bid openings and now might be coming up very soon. I have wrote down here in two weeks, but we've pretty much strangled a lot of that one week. So we're getting really close to those. Fall River cleanup, we discussed that, and the machines that we are looking at buying to help us keep the foliage and the cattails clean from the river. And we will have further update on that when we get more to that. And as of right now, that would be it. Our next meeting's going to be at 1:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center on February 28th. Everybody is welcome to come. It is an open meeting. And anything that you might have as a problem that Public Works can help you with, please join us. Let us know what's going on.
I have something to add. I've brought this up many a times in Public Works, and it seems to be on deaf ears or something, but I keep getting phone calls and they're getting nastier now. The people that had to move their trailers off the street and were not making other people move their trailers. They're still sitting where they've been for the last month. And I'm tired of getting the phone calls. I just keep telling them, well, it's in the works, but it isn't. So I'd like to know when we're going to do the ordinances that we're supposed to be doing.
Well, I'll answer you, Craig, right now, for the most part. And this is an ongoing battle, as you well know, that we want to discuss at the next Public Works meeting. But I will tell you that exactly that, we've got trailers sitting on the, on the street and trucks as well, that we tag them, they move them, and they bring them back. There's no easy answer for that. I can't give you an easy solution for it. So I've got some ideas. We're going to talk about the next committee, committee meeting. Right now, our focus is on the nuisance vehicles or nuisance situations. And we are, we've now gone out with our last letter on those. And I realize it's a different topic, but we've gone out with our latter. We're going out this week with our final letter from legal on the nuisance vehicles so we can start towing, so.
Why don't we have our law enforcement go talk to these people with the trailers if they're just going to tear the tags off?
And Rennis has been doing that. He has been doing that. And, you know, I give, I give them to Ross as they come up to me. And it's, it's an ongoing battle. I don't disagree with you. It's a violation of the ordinance, but it's a constant battle.
Well, I'm going to tell them to start calling you at home.
That's fine. They can call me anytime.
Any other questions? Couple things. Dave, you had talked about the contact list for the burn pile. We chatted on Friday that you were almost through that list.
Yes.
If you and Craig had gotten all of the contacts.
We discussed it this afternoon. And yes, we are all done. And we actually have added a few. And mostly, it's not for the reasons of possible problems, but just informative for businesses along that highway. So there is a couple that we did add for permanent for the list, but for the most part, everybody is done, and we did add some to it. But as a courtesy, we did talk to other people that were on the highway that, that we thought would be a good informative discussion with them.
Okay. So as you and I talked about, there's a folder in Jeff's office for the 2023 burn pile. The checklist is on there. So if you or Craig could sign the
I can be there in the morning.
The contact. And then the next step will be for Jeff to get the notices on the city's website. And I anticipated when we're going to burn with this weather, you know, getting in touch with Billy.
Yep.
And then the wildland fire folks and come up with some, some dates so we can get those posted up.
Yep.
We'll get those posted.
And I'll, Jeff, if it's not a problem, I'll be at your office at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a very good pleasure.
You had mentioned the roof bid openings. That will be next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, okay.
At Public Works is when those bids will be open. I've asked Jeff to be there. I can't be there. I'm going to be at the pre-construction
Meeting.
Meeting with the road folks. That particular one isn't going to be open to the public. But I do want to let the public know that March 1st, next Wednesday night at 6:00, there'll be an open house here at the Mueller Center, and the construction folks will be talking about the schedule for this construction season. So again, that's March 1st, 6:00 here at the Mueller Center. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Southern Hills Golf Course, Jeff?
So the, we did have an unscheduled meeting on the 8th of February. The primary purpose was to brief the advisory board on the course financial position and pending project review. I say unscheduled because I had announced there was, not until March was the first meeting at the last council meeting. So I, I erred in that. I apologize. The next board is 14 March, 2023. That's at 6:00 p.m. at the golf course. And I'll roll into the city administrative report. The only thing I have to add to the committee reports would be that we will make a decision in the morning regarding the weather for city operations. We'll make that decision until we see if it's bad or how bad it is. And that's all I've got, pending your questions.
All right. My update for you is very brief tonight, and it has to do with the vacancy in Ward 4. I had given you incorrect information in the motion as far as filling the ward vacancy. You had voted to appoint somebody for the remaining term, and that's not correct. Looking at South Dakota Codified Law 9-13-14.1, if a vacancy exists on a municipal governing body, the remaining members shall appoint a replacement to serve until the next annual municipal election, where the vacancy may be filled by a special election. So it's going to be on the agenda for our March 3rd, I believe it is, council meeting. Hopefully, we'll have some folks in Ward 4 that want to serve out until the next election. So that's also a reminder to the public out there that if you haven't got your letter of interest to City Hall, please do that so the council has someone to, some applications to, to review and appoint from.
March 6th.
Okay, it's March 6th. Be the next scheduled council meeting. Again, it's, it will only be till the next election. So with that, do you have any other questions for me? Need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session under South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-23 legal.
Second.
Wait, we were so in sync on that one. I didn't even hear it.
Discussion. There won't be any action taken after we come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Back in session at 8:39. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Aye.
Hang on. Remember, I'm taking notes here. So Craig made the motion to adjourn. So Craig made the motion to adjourn. Who seconded?
Larry.
Me.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Y'all drive safe, won't hold.
Yes.